Okay.
Call our meeting order, Mr. President of the Legion?
The pleasure of the Legion to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
It's not on TV. The media is recording. Okay, I'll have the clerk please call the roll.
Supervisor Fulton, here.
Treasurer Horning, here.
Clerk Chopiu, here.
Trustee Colaini, here.
Trustee Germain, here.
Trustee Harper, here.
Trustee Petrucci, here.
Thank you. Now it's on. Okay, approval of our meeting agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Treasurer Horning, second by Trustee Harper, any discussion?
Should we add?
We're gonna add in-house water discussion.
Thirteen B.
Actually Kathy, you gotta go back to the back page.
Go.
You can put whatever number you want. Let's move that to thirteen A and then we'll move everything else down. And we continue that discussion, is that fair?
Are we gonna add the capital improvements project also?
It's on the back page, Matt, there's a two-page agenda. Do you still support that, Glenn?
Yes.
Any other discussion on the agenda? Be none, all of them favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. Call of the public this evening, anybody call of the public? Be none, we'll move on to item number six, which is approval of our consent agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Colaini, second by Trustee Petrucci, any discussion? Be none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. Item number seven A, this is our budget hearing for the 2015 and sixteen fiscal year. And we'll start with the General Appropriations Act. And Manager Wickman has a brief presentation. And we'll take any discussion from the public if there's any questions.
Do we have to make a motion to open the public hearing?
I believe we do. I entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
To open the public hearing concerning the budget for fiscal year 2015, 2016.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Colaini, second by Treasurer Horning, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, we are in our open meeting for our fiscal year.
Thank you, Ms. Supervisor, just quick highlights from the budget presentation in front of you. First, our truth in taxation notice is included here. And of course, we have the road millage which is new this year. These are the mill rates, they haven't changed in the eight years I've been here for. But those are the millage rates for the various township-related millages on the books. Those are finalized, of course, later this year. Our budget timing is different from the statutory truth in taxation, but this is what's anticipated to be the millage rates later.
Can you just point out correctly what's, that the people approved one bill, but because of Headley, that's why it's less than one bill, is that correct?
Yeah, over time, it has rolled back from, actually, I don't know if it was...
It was actually a little higher than that, I think. It was one point one, I think.
Something like that, yeah. It's rolled back over time. And ours is actually, I think, if not the lowest one in Livingston County, it's one of the lower ones. Yep. Just from the general fund standpoint, some high-level breakdown of where the revenues come from. Obviously, half of it, you see that represented from the state shared revenue, from the sales and use tax in the state of Michigan, that's our piece based on our population. About another quarter of that is through property taxes. And the remainder of the general fund revenues are through other incomes, capital or cable franchise, property tax administration system, water sewer fees and planning zoning fees, those types of things. As far as expenditures, they're broke down by the major cost centers. Obviously, we do a little bit of everything, whether it's statutory or value-added service that the township has chosen over the years. That's how our budget breaks down. A copy of our budget is available on the homepage of the website and is always available on the finance page of our website. If anybody's interested, I also do have some extra copies up here if anybody in the audience would like one. That's just the highlights of the budget. So happy to answer any questions or...
This is an open meeting, if any comments from the audience? Any final comments from the board? I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Salute, support.
Motion by Trustee Germain, second by Trustee Harper, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. Do we need, is there a resolution?
Yes, so first resolution's General Appropriations Act.
Yep, I just gotta, I'd like to find it here, let me get through the Mark's plan.
I'd like to move the resolution to establish a General Appropriations Act for Heartland Township for the 2015, 2016 fiscal year, to define the powers and duties of the township officers in relation to budget administration and to provide remedies for refusal or neglect to comply with requirements of this resolution.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Germain, second by Trustee Harper, any discussion? Be none, I'll have the clerk please call the roll.
Trustee Colaini?
Yes.
Trustee Harper?
Yes.
Trustee Germain?
Yes.
Treasurer Horning?
Yes.
Supervisor Fulton?
Yes.
Clerk Chopiu, yes. Trustee Petrucci?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number seven B is the Heartland Deerfield Fire Authority budget. Manager Wickman, would you, are you gonna bring that one up as well, or other questions?
Yeah, I can, it's not necessarily presentation-friendly, but I haven't been answering any questions aboard, we talked about the last work session.
Anybody from the Fire Authority, you have any comments on the budget?
No.
I think one thing should be maybe just noted here is that when we first started the Fire Authority in 2000 and, was it before 2008? It was before that, yeah.
Yeah.
But the percentages for Deerfield have gone up considerably since the beginning. It's up, this next year is seventy-seven percent Heartland and twenty-two percent Deerfield. I believe it started, Joe, what did it start at, eighteen percent?
Less than.
Yeah.
It's changed, it's about a four percent swing or so. Any comments from the board on the Deerfield Fire Authority budget? If there's no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
So moved. Support.
Motion by Trustee Harper, second by Trustee Petrucci. Is this a resolution as well, cycle through this?
No.
Just a motion?
Just motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. All right, next is applicant Chestnut Development, revised plan development, conceptual plan. Good evening, guys. Welcome. Joe, were you on the planning commission when this came forward?
Yes.
You were?
Yep, I brought, I think I summarized this at the previous meeting, not the one I was unable to attend back in...
They didn't come in.
Ah, that's why we're here today tonight. So, if it's acceptable, since you were part of that process, have some input from yourself this evening as to what happened at the planning commission level, not to put you on the spot.
Well, I thought, I can, I can just summarize basically that the, that the presentation is basically a change from what was originally proposed for this nine-acre parcel. There's a new product that the applicant is proposing, they're detached condominiums. The density is significant, but not necessarily for the type of product that they're presenting, which are, I believe, ranch-style homes, higher-end quality materials. And overall, I believe the, my recollection is that the planning commission did find it, you know, an acceptable plan at this juncture.
Okay. And by the way, if you'd like to introduce yourselves, good evening.
Thanks for your time, David, look there, Livingston here. And I'm Steve Grono, Chestnut.
Thanks for coming here this evening. This is part of a plan development process, and this is the conceptual plan that did go through the planning commission. And at this point, they take feedback from the board and take that feedback, and then they go back and start doing it much more detail, I don't know if it's final grades and such, I don't remember what the second process is in the PD. But it's much more detailed than what's before us. So we're basically looking at, this evening, we'll be looking at density, general layout, and any other questions that you may have pertaining to this development. If one of you gentlemen would like to just briefly explain your proposal, and we can take a look at it, and we can open it up to questions from the board.
Absolutely, I don't know, does the overhead...
Yeah, it can.
Okay, yeah, several of the things that we talked about, the planning commission meeting when we were there at the end of July, this is a different product than what was presented to the township board back, I think in last June or July of 2014. This product is a detached, single-family product as opposed to a normal, single-family product. And it's different due to the fact that the ownership for a product like this is really from the outside building in. Couple of the other things that we talked about, the planning commission, is how unique this property is. Excuse me. If you recall from when we were here last summer, this property is about nine acres, it's on the south side of M-59. This is the San Marino development, this here is the Autumn Woods development, and we kinda sit right in here. The property in itself is unique, both due to its location and zoning on the property. The location is unique because it's really tucked amongst a bunch of different types of development. You've got the New River Church here, which is less than a half-mile away. Here's an office complex, which is less than two-tenths of a mile. This is an assisted living facility, you know, less than a half-mile, and some other, the old high school, and some other apartments that are also around a half-mile. So it does really sit amongst a bunch of different housing types within the township. The property itself is unique in its zoning because it is zone PD. However, the master plan for this parcel is quasi-public, quasi-public in that category. You could have many different things, schools, churches, wastewater treatment plants, a lot of other high-intensity uses. What we're presenting tonight is a product that we feel would be a win-win situation for both Mr. Grono and the township. This would give him the opportunity to build a product that he's done a lot of research on, I will let him get into that a little bit more. It would also be a benefit, we feel, to the township, because it would bring a use to the township that's more consistent with the neighboring land uses. It would take that public, quasi-public, master plan designation pretty much right out of play. It would also give the township a product that it does not currently have. The market for this product is really retiree-type people, and it's a good product for the area because of some of the other uses around it. In other areas, we found that people like to live here for close proximity to shopping. Some of these people may have family members that live in some of the nearby, single-family areas. In this case, we've got an assisted living facility that's close by. So it's a product that really fits in quite nicely with what's in the surrounding area. One of the other benefits to the township for this project, and we talked about this a little bit last summer as well, the township has asked for a water main connection to the Autumn Woods development, and there is some off-site work that would have to be done as part of this. And for this particular project, Mr. Grono has agreed to pay for the cost of that entirely on his dime. And just to summarize that, there's a water main here down in the Autumn Woods development. We're proposing to connect that up through the development, which is one thing that the township has asked for.
And that's going to be directionally drilled?
It'll be directionally drilled under this woods line over here, yeah.
And why is that?
Because there's a pretty dense, heavy wood line there.
And that's to protect the wood?
That's to protect the wood, yes, so those trees would not have to be cut down. It would be open cut, you know, through the development, like, you know, most of them are, and that's not an issue with this development. So that's a project that we're planning. Now, this is the layout of the piece, this is twenty-five units, again, they're detached ownership from the outside of the building in, serviced off a single private road. The water main connection that we talked about would come down this street, you know, over, and then directionally bored to the connection in Autumn Woods. This project does have about thirty-two percent open space, you know, we've got a four-tenths of a mile walking path around here. And I'm sure there's gonna be some other things that come out in planning that the township may want, which we would certainly consider. And with that, would be happy to answer any questions. If you would like more information on the type of product and some of the research that Mr. Grono has done, I'm sure he'd be happy to share that with you. The township planning commission at our meeting in January did look favorable upon this type of product for this site, and we'd look forward to moving forward with it.
How far apart are these homes?
Thirty feet.
Thirty feet apart?
Yep.
These are the elevations?
Yeah, a bunch of elevations and floor plans, just for general information. Our architects are still developing the final product. And we hear Bryce has been talking to potential customers and visiting other projects.
Thank you.
Trying to think of all the best ideas from them. It's been very successful over in Osteola Township, it's kind of a poster child for this project. Did anybody visit the Villas of Osteola? The, they just answered a very large market demand problem this morning. Or old day I was in class for a certification for aging in place through the Home Builders' Association, and they brought some statistics forward, which kinda coincide with your survey and your study that was recently done. The percentage of population that's aging and kinda housing product that they're looking for. And what you see there is basically seventeen-hundred-and-twenty square feet, it's a ranch, there is a finished lower level. The exterior finishes are done with maintenance-free products, a lot of stone, brick, and siding. The attraction for folks that are fifty and up is, everything is basically taken care by the dues and the association. Lawn care, landscape care, the beds, the sidewalks, the road, everything is paid for through the dues, there really is no need for the owners to do anything, write that check every month. The price point on this comes in, as Polte found their way in the market over the last year and a half of building out the Osteola site, at an average of about two-sixty-five to two-seventy-five. And they come standard with a lot of nice features, walk-in, wraparound showers, barrier free access, open floor plan. We're gonna amp up what they're doing a little, we're building a little higher-end product similar to this right now over in Brighton, that is in the seven-to-eight-hundred-thousand-dollar range, but it's the same concept, they're just, these are folks that just want a little more, it's a maintenance-free ranch, it's bigger, there's a lot of high-end amenities in it. So, we'd like to get this in the ground next year, if the board is favorable and the planning commission, we can work through with them. The big expense here for us is the water main, the twelve-inch water main is a big chunk of change to install, particularly when it's being directionally bored for four-hundred feet. So we kinda worked it into a pro forma and agreed in principle with the planning commission that we would bear the cost of that. Apparently, the engineer feels that looping, that system would be of a significant benefit to the utility. We needed to service this project, we can do this on an eight-inch, just up to the cul-de-sac, but we're happy to do the rest of it too. If we can come to an agreement where this project looks viable, then we'll install the water main. I don't have a whole lot else to tell you about, and I'll be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you.
If I could real quick, I'm concerned, it's twenty feet between units.
Only twenty feet?
Twenty feet, yes.
And then how far are they off the road?
Thirty feet, yeah. And that is the same as what the Autumn Woods development is.
Autumn Woods and Millpoint are both twenty feet. And actually, Autumn Woods is actually maybe smaller than that.
Well, Autumn Woods has a lot of open space to it too, and the thing about this, I mean, this property here looks really nice, but I can visualize what it looks like to me as a road, you're gonna drive in, you're gonna see a bunch of garages, because the homes are behind, and you're gonna see twenty-five, basically, garages. And I can remember when this was eighteen units, and it was frowned upon, and seeing twenty-five, if I was a neighbor, you know, one of the other subdivisions that are already there, so, you know, they can't make a decision now because they're there. As a homeowner of one of these other homes, I think the density is just really heavy, I don't see enough open space.
I have a question. I understand that our market study said that we needed this type of a product, and I don't disagree with anything on that line. But if I look at the map that you have here, Steve, the map right here, it looks like you overlaid this on the previous map. Is that true?
I'm not sure why it looks that way.
Well, because you've got a straight road coming in, and you've got the houses laid out with the previous site plan.
The ghosted image there is from the previous site plan, I'm not sure why it was presented that way.
And...
It was on purpose to show us the difference, I think.
Yeah.
So my real concern with this project is the housing and the density around the cul-de-sac itself. I wanna make sure that we're very sensitive to the people that live in San Marino, where I believe those are, I'm not sure what the size of those lots are.
Half-acre.
What?
Probably half-acre.
No, they're bigger than that.
I think they might be bigger than that. If you, if you look at the layout on the left-hand side...
Those have more than half-acre.
Yes, they are, they're one to two.
I'm half-acre.
If you were behind a couple of those houses, you might be looking at the back of three different houses almost on, from your backyard. I just, I don't, it doesn't bother me if the houses are tighter up by the front, because they're compact more towards the road part. But I really think that it's getting very close to the back lot line with that additional density on the cul-de-sac. And, again, the eighteen matches what's to the one side, that density, which are third-acre, I believe, third-acre lots. What's Autumn Woods? James, do you have that?
I'm looking in Planner's memo.
For which number? Well, I'm, yeah, I'm looking at page in the packet, see if I can find it real quick.
You can look at, you can...
The conceptual plan.
You can look at, you can look at Autumn Woods and see, there's an aerial photo in your conceptual plan that shows proportion of Autumn Woods coming around on either, on two sides.
But if you look at, like, lot number sixty-five in San Marino, there's gonna be three houses now in that person's backyard where the density before would have been, you know, one and a half or so, because the density's increased by twenty-five percent.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but it's my understanding from looking at the site plan that most of that natural vegetation in that old fence rows is to remain.
Scrubs.
We've got a period.
And there's an elevation change there as well, if I recall, from...
No. The distance from the houses that are to the west and the proposed buildings, it's because those lots are pretty deep, they're a pretty far distance, and it looks like the majority of the trees that are there are on this development's property and within their control. Isn't that true, that the green line shown on the...
This is the existing tree land over here, and one of the things that this development does is it pulls these units farther away from San Marino, and we did feel that was important because the density is lower over in San Marino. If you look at the underlying plan, you know, these lots, you know, go way back up into this area, so we did pull that up. I don't think the density is that much different, especially for Autumn Woods, you know, there's five homes along here, if you count this one, we've got one, two, three, four, five, so this area is very similar. There is one gap in the landscaping right here, I think the ordinance does require us to fill that in, you know, which we would do. The remainder of this is all an existing, very mature tree line, and that would certainly stay in place, this is the area that we would be directional boring underneath to keep, to keep those trees in place.
Yeah, but eight through, eight through twelve are the ones I'm concerned with, because it does show that they're gonna have to be removing some of that existing vegetation.
Just put a house and they won't have...
Does that cul-de-sac have to be that size, so you can get the driveways in?
Yeah, the existing vegetation is right here, so we're really not removing any of that. This lighter green is just open space.
No, on your drawing, we're looking at the overhead of the actual aerial view of the trees.
Yeah, lot ten, lot ten.
They're coming out, lot ten, eleven.
Back there, it's gonna go right to the lot line.
And eleven, they're both into the trees.
Not gonna have a deck.
Yeah, there would be a small deck on the back, you know, that would be...
My taste is that those people have one or two-acre lots on that side, and I wanna make sure that we're sensitive to that density that we're proposing here right behind their homes, especially if you're gonna remove that natural vegetation, which maybe you can do it, but it looks, it looks like nine, ten, eleven, and twelve are gonna be real close. And again, how you have them closer to the road, the one through eight, I don't have any problem with that.
Yeah, well, we're not, I can tell you, we're not planning on removing any of this vegetation, this tree line is gonna stay intact the way it is. There may be a few trees that would have to be taken out, only to get this directional bore in, you know, at each end of this, so we'd probably need fifteen, twenty feet.
And I can appreciate that, except that, you know, I originally bought a home in Millpoint, and all of a sudden, a few years after that, an apartment building went up. And after that, Autumn Woods went up. And it's all been going west. And if that were the case, why, I'm just curious, why are we concerned about the density now?
Well, the density of, their original plan was for eighteen, now it's twenty-five.
Yeah, that was the original plan, but my point is, is, you know, at San Marino, these folks have over, well, you corrected me, it was bigger, larger than a half-acre. You can't, the distance between the back of that house and where these other houses are is considerable. I mean, you just pull it up.
But along the suggestion, a plan development's put in our ordinance for a reason. There's supposed to be some benefit back to the community. And it gives us flexibility to make something work.
Right, well, the alternative there is you can have another church, right?
No. I don't know where that came from.
Well, no, it's zone quasi-public.
But my question is...
And it was originally bought back.
Is it okay if I, I don't agree with a certain part of the plan?
No, I'm not saying that.
That's your...
That's why we're here.
I'm just trying to, you know, at some point, you gotta have some discussion on it, and the point is, is that you're calling out these three homes right here, and I'm just trying to point out the fact that where those homes are located on there, when you compare it to where San Marino, I don't think there's the kind of effect that you're thinking is going to have. You got all, those folks in San Marino have tremendous amount of property there. And, and I'm just pointing out as well, that is currently zone quasi-public, which means it has significant high-density use, it could go there, and we would not be able to stop them from putting it there.
But it's still a PD?
No, you don't have to go PD, this is a PD.
No, it's zone PD.
Zone PD?
No, it's zone...
Yes, it is, it's zone PD.
The zoning on it is PD, the master plan is...
I've got it reversed, but my point is, it's still zone quasi-public, land use is quasi-public.
I don't, Joe, I'm not disagreeing with you. I just haven't, I do have an issue with the density on that one portion of the project.
I have an issue just how close together and how close together, twenty feet apart. It's gonna look like, when you drive in there, it's gonna be...
But here's my opinion, if somebody wants, if that's their flavor of place to live, then that's up to them.
Have you seen, have you gone in Millpoint? They're twenty feet apart.
Millpoint houses? I walk it all the time, I don't recall them being twenty feet apart.
I can guarantee you they're twenty feet, because I live there, and I know exactly how far they are. Because, were they thirty feet from their homes? They're not even, they're thirty feet from, they're less than thirty feet from the road. You can pull it up.
But that's very high density.
That's two-hundred-and-six homes.
Joe, listen to what my point is, you're asking to put a much higher-density house next to one that's, that's one or two, whatever it is, it's one or two acres. And I think that, my personal opinion is, we need to be sensitive to that, that's all I'm suggesting.
Well, that's, but this product is for, really for empty nesters or retirees though, and it's very similar to...
though, and it's, it's, it's very similar to, um, like condominiums, only they're detached. And it gives the people a sense of their own instead of having a neighbor, a wall between them and a neighbor. But where, where I'm having a little bit of an issue with it is that you say it's gonna be for empty nesters and retirees, but at what stage, and I ask this question because I don't know the answer to it, at what stage do you, is there bylaws that state that this is going to be for that type of, no children are gonna be allowed to live there on a permanent basis, but maybe visit grandma and grandpa for a week's, or two weeks at a time? The reason I say that is because if this product is sold to families with two or three children, where these kids, these kids have no place to play. And they're gonna end up playing in San Marino's open spaces, they're gonna end up playing in Autumn Woods, and that's gonna present a problem. So if you're gonna restrict this to empty nesters and retirees, that type, that product, is there a way of doing that? And is, is that something you've thought of? I don't know.
Right, well, Joe, I would want to restrict it for, for a couple of reasons. One is, let's go back to the eighteen unit plan. If we did that, it would be typical, uh, production homes like you're seeing built by Eleanor all over the county. And those are gonna be families who, if they wanna go over to San Marino, they'll do it, I guess, through the sidewalk up the M-59. So I don't think anybody, no matter what we do or zone it, or try to restrict it in terms of who can live there and who can't. Um, if there's children in the area, they're gonna wander, I guess they're gonna wander. I'm not sure I can really imagine if we have to be violent to prevent that. I wouldn't want to prevent it. Because when you study aging in place, uh, folks do need younger people around them. They, they, that's part of their lifestyle, it stimulates them, it engages in conversation with young people. You don't wanna make it so exclusive that you've sown out people that can bring an element of life for those folks. So I'm, I'm an opponent of, of isolating people by age groups, just theoretically. You know, trespassing on other people's property. One of the issues the planning commission brought up was connectivity. They were actually, had the opposite position of what you're suggesting, is that we want more connectivity. We want people to go back and forth and be able to travel between communities and have some connectivity with their neighbors. And even since there's so many families over here, this could be mom and dad living over here, and it could be younger grandkids over here in San Marino or Autumn Woods. So there is a, I guess there's a pro and con both sides of that discussion.
But see, what we're doing is we're, we're, we're approving a subdivision, and, and there is no place for children to play, none. They're gonna end up over next door, and that's gonna present a problem with that other subdivision. It's gonna present a problem with the neighbors.
Just so you know, Millpoint, which two-hundred-and-six homes has no place for children to play.
They have open space.
No, they don't. They're not, those are all, are, are, there is no public, uh, open space for playing in Millpoint. And they're prohibited from going over to play in the, the cobblestone to the south. There is no open space. I sat, I lived there for eight years, and there is no open space for kids to play. They play in the street. My, my house was the house where everybody played hockey right in front and played basketball.
Okay, I, I understand. Is that fair, is that fair to Autumn Woods, though? Is that fair to them?
My point is...
Is that fair that they're putting their money into their playground and other kids, other subdivisions are going over there?
They don't, they don't go over there. They, they won't let them over there. Number two, Autumn Woods doesn't have any playscapes. There's no open space for playing in there. You can barely get your car driven around that, that subdivision.
That's true.
You go in there, you cannot park on the streets because the roads are narrower than the ones that were approved for Hart, uh, for Millpoint.
That's true, I know that.
So I, I'm trying, you know, I'm just trying to point out, all you're, you're making, you're bringing up good points, but nowhere in our township, other than Heartland Estates and Cobblestone, are the only two subdivisions that have been put in recently where there's been, um, open space for kids to play. Even Meadow, Meadow, even Meadowview Estates doesn't have any open space. They have walking trails, but they don't have a, like a, a park or a soccer field or a basketball net anywhere.
I don't have a prob, I don't have a problem with the density, because I think that the people at San Marino would prefer looking at a house rather than a church, because this was owned by church, a church.
Correct, it's, it was a...
I, I think that, I don't think there'd be any objection to that, but I don't know that.
And, and, you know, I mean, and my point I'm trying to make here is, is you're, you're making really good points about recreation and things like that, so one of the reasons why we've been promoting the parks that we have. We need to have more things for kids to be able to go to and, 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 and go to those locations. Because the way in which this has unfolded over the last twenty years has not been very consistent. So I don't, I, I, I understand where you're coming from, but you go over here to the condos across over here, Woodcliff, and there's no prohibition for families to move in there. And there's absolutely no places for them to play there. They can go in the back on the township property and park, but that's just been recently been open to them to do that, as of in the last, what, two years maybe? And that is probably the, one of the highest density locations as well. So I'm just, you know, you're making good points, don't get me wrong. And, but I look at this as a product, looking at our aging population, and I think that's what, exactly what the planning commission is, why they found it.
Steve, do you have a park similar to this somewhere else?
Well, let's see, the closest I can give you to take a look at, um, Joe, would be the, um, Terrell Township, uh, which is in the Heartland School District, but it's just north, um, in Irish Hills. Homes there are larger, uh, like our ranch there is two-thousand-seventy square feet. Similar functionality and space planning. Um, but what we ran into there frankly is we ran into younger families who just absolutely struggled to make the down payments because those homes, because of the larger lot sizes and the lower density. The homes were price point that they were not affordable for, for a lot of the youth. So we kinda struggled in there. We sold thirteen homes over a two-year period. And by downsizing the home a little bit to seventeen, eighty, and bringing it under three hundred, um, and making it more attractive to, this, this, I'm, I'm sure that there will be other people that love to live here other than seniors. It doesn't have to be exclusively spent... Eight-hundred thousand. We thought it would all be sixty-five and up, and the first buyer is forty-five. So it, it, it's kinda unpredictable, but I think that generally, if you look at the track record of the buyers at Osceola's project, um, it's mainly, you know, fifty-five and up, but there are a few, you know, there are a few forty-somethings in there, because they like that park-and-go lifestyle where there's no maintenance.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I'm sensitive to your concern and Mr. Falcon's concern. I, I, I'm looking at the aerial, um, Joe makes a good point, because they do have these huge backyards and that huge thick tree line. One of our goals was to preserve that tree line, because actually, if that wasn't there, I'd probably be planting one, you know, creating some berms with our topsoil and planting on top of that. But it's, it's such a blessing to already have that mature tree line buffering us from San Marino. So, you know, whether we have twenty-five homes, fifty homes, an apartment complex, or whatever it is, it's not gonna change the life of the people in San Marino. They're not gonna see anything then that they do now, you know? Because, because we have the blessing of that buffer. I think that's a significant consideration in your liberation.
Well, lot number ten, definitely you're gonna take the tree out. I mean, the house is in the trees, and you're gonna put a deck on there, because these drawings have no decks, right?
Can you pull, you know, aerial over just a little so we could maybe see...
That what?
Actually, looking at the, the, there's an overlay on...
Yeah, we're looking at the overlay.
There's an overlay on that picture.
Can you pull up page two-seventeen, James, from my...
Yeah. So is ten the one furthest, uh, closest to the...
At the bottom, right, it's in the tree.
Yeah.
Right there.
Can you pull that, can you pull that up so we can see San Marino all the way to where the house is, maybe? I don't know what impact that's really gonna have on that guy.
I'm just saying, I don't even know how you could get a deck on there and not touch the lot line.
Pull it off a little farther, David. Can you give us an idea of the scale of the back of that house to the property line? Well, I can, I can tell you that this tree line is what we picked up in the field when we surveyed the property.
Right.
Um, and these, I'm guessing, are probably some branches and some overreach from, from some limbs and whatnot. Um, but this is the actual, you know, what we picked...
Right, so look at number ten. Look at the line there by number ten.
Is that, is that, would you do the same tree line on the San Marino side? Where would it be, David? Right over there? Uh, well, my guess is it's probably gonna be similar. You know, I think generally, these, these tree rows usually run along section lines, which this is, um, you know, and they were generally farm, farm fields on both sides where the tree row was maintained between it. My guess is that the tree, that the, the trunks of the trees are really close to the property line, within a couple of feet on either side.
I thought you said that's what the dark line is.
The dark line is the outline of the...
The tree line.
Of the trees, yeah.
Right. If you look at lot number ten...
Right.
That's within a couple of feet of that house.
Yeah. But what I'm saying is, my guess is that most of the large mature trees are really close to this property line. But you know, Miss, Miss, I, I appreciate your point. I would not want to cut that tree and open up a view lane right into that neighbor's back there.
No, I just wonder how could you even put a deck on that house?
Yeah, no, I think, I think we'd have to reconfigure the site plan a little bit to try to be sensitive.
At number ten, I just don't see how, how that can work.
No, I wouldn't wanna cut any of the trees, any mature trees down.
And I think that's a bell same point.
Yeah, I like, I like the, the mature trees and such.
Right.
I just wanted, I just think that's an area that I would, if you could massage it somehow to, to cover that. And you, I'm sure you've seen the same plan. Those houses seem awful tight to the property line and at, uh...
Autumn Woods.
Autumn Woods. I mean, that one guy's, it's like he's mowing part of your property and is that, that aerial?
They are mowing part of it.
Are they?
Yeah.
They've enjoyed...
Yeah.
Right.
I understand.
...
I think there's some guard, there's some guards back there as well.
You know, David, has a retention basin plan put down that way? Is it possible, David, I don't know what those are, great speculations, but is it possible to bank our topsoil between the proposed retention basin and the property line to create an elevated barrier there, unless he's on top of it? It's tight because this all does drain downhill to the back there. We're catching it in the basin? Yeah. Wouldn't go, wouldn't go past that into the joining yards, though, right? No. Could we, could we put a row of trees across there? Or not? Uh, we could, we could put some trees along the back of the property line, sure, yeah. Yeah. And more than likely, what we would do when we get to site plan is just that, physically tie out whatever mature trees there are along in this area. Right now, we're just kinda showing a, a canopy. We have not actually tied out trees. And that would be worthwhile exercise to do in that area. Those homes are gonna sell better and be more valuable to those owners with a nice vegetative barrier between them and the neighbors in Autumn Woods, to your point. So it's actually to my benefit to create a significant landscape barrier back there. I think it adds value and it makes that home workable.
What would, what would the estimated association fees be in something like this?
Oh, gosh, you know, Joe, I can't give you an exact figure. I can tell you from, if it was a Los Angeles, you just...
Do you have any idea, just a ballpark?
Know what they were getting? Two-fifty?
Two-fifty a month.
What, what is it?
Just approximately.
How much were that?
Two-fifty a month.
Two-fifty. Which by the time you pay for snowing, roll, and lawn care, exterior maintenance on the building, that's, that's all right.
I don't have a problem with that, with the way it's set up. I think it's gonna be less intrusive with, uh, homes there than what could go there. I can, I can't imagine a church in there, uh, the traffic and the lights for the cars and everything else, so I have a problem with that.
I, I don't have a problem with it, and the issue with kids, it came to mind that...
Well, Joe answered the question properly, and I, and I understand.
What were you gonna say?
I was gonna say that, you know, I live on ten acres, the houses behind me are all five-plus acres, and I've got kids coming into my pond fishing in my backyard. Kids are gonna go where kids go to have, you know, there's Long Lake just right at the end of, you know, pine trees. So kids are gonna go, you might have to chase them off your property if it bothers you, or you just say hi to them, and, you know, just let them do what they wanna do. So it's... How's your fishing?
Hey, Steve, um, are there sidewalks? There's...
There, there is a sidewalk along M-59. And what we have in the development, if we could go back to the plan, uh...
To your plan there?
Uh, this plan, yeah. Yeah, what we have here, this dark line, is a walking trail.
So there's nothing out front, they're right on the road.
Uh, there is a sidewalk along M-59.
Right, there's nothing on your street, whatever that street's gonna be named, there's no sidewalks.
Incidentally, we've got another development going to Noceola right now. We've got a, an island similar to this, and that is their, their active recreation area. Very similar to this.
What would be in the island? What would you put in that island?
Uh, on this island, probably benches, a place where people will sit. You know, again, we see this as being more of a, an older crowd. Um, you know, you'd maybe utilizing this walking trail, a place to sit.
Walking dog.
You know, if there were a couple of kids there, that'd be a great place to throw a ball around.
So, that, that just came to mind. It's another thing that scares me is, when you walk through Autumn Woods or Millpoint or any of those, they have sidewalks, because I walk them all the time. I live over in that area. This wouldn't even have a sidewalk. You have to walk around the outside. How do you get there? I mean, from your backyard? And it's a trail. It's not gonna be a sidewalk, right? It's gonna be a trail?
Yeah.
It's a trail.
Has the fire marshal seen this at all yet?
No, in the reviews, I'm not, yeah.
Not, not yet. I wonder if he can get a fire truck around that corner?
Uh, you can get a fire truck. We have put the, you know, typical fire truck on top of this.
Do you plan on any street parking or, or the streetlights or anything like that in this?
We, there's, there's real big reviews on streetlights.
I'm, I'm, I'm hoping to get, I get the answer that I want.
Yeah. I frankly, I'm, I'm not an advocate of a lot of streetlights. We, we, we do have a provision in the master plan bylaws for a photocell lighting plan that is part of the home, in the Abzamian Lighting.
Because I'm not sure, but I'm pretty sure San Marino doesn't have any nightlights, do they?
I don't think so. I don't think either, I don't think either one does either, so...
Heartland Estates has two. It's only, it's only at the bus stops for the kids that's on...
Yeah. I, I would just, I would wanna make sure we're sensitive of that as well.
Mm.
Unless our ordinance has changed. I don't think it has.
There'd be a huge chain of rooms with people, they just don't wanna see some lights there.
Other questions for this evening?
We have Dr. Blair.
Yep. One question is, do you have a rough idea on the percentage of open space there is? Because there appears to be quite a bit behind all the buildings on both the east and the west side.
We have, on the plan that's presented, thirty-two percent open space.
Okay, so I think it's unfair to say there's none. Because there's gonna be a lot of, and it'll become more like common space because-
Right, right. And one of the things different from this than Autumn Woods, for example, most of their open space is wetlands. A large majority of it is on this property. We don't really have any wetlands. So all the open space that we do have is usable upland areas.
It's the same thing with Mill Point. Yeah, most of Mill Point is wetlands or it backs up against the houses that are there and no one really can access it.
Right.
And then the second question I had was whether it is possible to move the cul-de-sac a little bit to the north at all?
If we move it to the north, one of the things that the planning commission, and I don't remember the township board asked for when we were before them last summer. The houses in Autumn Woods, there is, the first house is a certain distance if you went to the area like I showed you. We were asked to keep, you know, this home right here back the same distance from M-59 is the closest home in Autumn Woods. So that's kind of what drove this layout. And there's not a whole lot of room, you know, with this product to squeeze everything farther in one direction or the other for that matter. This, you know, we do depict this as blue. This is gonna be a dry pond. You know, it'll hold some water after a ramp, but it's not gonna be wet. Wet all the time year round, I think.
Right. The only reason I was asking is because there's currently a nice stand of trees going east to west across the property.
Right.
And if you could even get five or 10 feet to the north, you might be able to retain some of those trees in the front yard of homes 15, 14, 13, 12.
Well, we could certainly take a look at that. I don't know, I'd have to overlay this on here, but I know there is a row of trees back in here.
Right, and on this one, you're showing you're planting new trees in the front yard.
Right, right, right. I mean, if it's a matter of, you know, the tree row moving, you know, nearer on the island up a little bit, there's something that we may be able to do. But again, I think during the site plan, we probably have to tie those trees out and see which ones we can reasonably-
Right. It's just an idea. For the concept, I'm all in, so.
Just a thought, but is there-
Say, we wanna make sure to keep it.
Is there a way on number 18 there, on house 18? Is there a way to make that house- Next to 19 in the same fashion and then move 17 and then the rest of them, spread them out a little bit more? Listen, you got quite a bit of property between 19 and 18, 18 and 17, more than some of the others. And it seems if you just straightened 18 out like 19 is, you could probably push the others over more.
This one right here?
Yeah.
Is that one? I mean, we could certainly straighten the orient-
If you straighten it out like 19, you can move that whole cul-de-sac over towards it and spread them out a little bit more. But that's what it looks like. I don't know exactly what the measurements would be.
Right, right, yeah. And, you know, we haven't decided if these are gonna be all, you know, garage one side or if we're gonna open the garages left, right. But certainly even with the garage left product, that would help, you know, straighten that out quite a bit more and give us a little bit more space to do some things like that. Yes, absolutely.
Last question is for Mr. Wickman. As a planned development, this is a multi-step process, if I remember correctly. We've got planning commission approval, looking for township board approval of the conceptual site plan. What are the following steps?
So the, there's not necessarily an approval here per se. It's a, that they've complied with the conceptual stage of the plan. The three phases of PD process, conceptual, preliminary, and final. Conceptual is just what the name implies, that we're seeing a napkin sketch of what's proposed. Make sure that they're given the direction they need before they get too far into the engineering and design to come back at a preliminary. Preliminary is the step where most of the work is done, so to speak, in design and presenting a site plan. That goes to planning commission, comes back to the board, and then in final approval, you know, that's where you've worked out your PD agreement and all that's involved with that. And just put the finishing touches on that site plan, approved the planning commission, then approved at the board again.
Okay. So, Mr. Bruno, when earlier you said you'd like to see construction, were you talking 2016 or 2015?
We'd like to see if we can get the infrastructure in the ground before things freeze up this year and then build the homes next year.
Okay. Sounds good.
So it would be hooves?
They'll be frozen. Four feet of frost. I'm not familiar with those terms. I'm not familiar as other people on these other subdivisions and that kind of thing, but it seems like density seems to be something we talk about in relation to Autumn Woods particularly. And again, if it's marketed, as he said, to the elderly couples, it makes a lot more sense than it would to children. My concern with children, not so much their playground area, is the safety area. With no sidewalks and having that many units in, which from what I've read, the trips in and out of cars, you're talking 250 trips in and out of that subdivision daily with a bunch of little kids. And no sidewalks to stay off that street, that would be my only concern.
It looks like Autumn Woods has them on both sides of the street.
They do.
They do on both sides. One last question for myself. Proposed, house number 16? I'm looking at the site plan map that has it transcribed on top.
Yeah.
Well, it's like an actual topo.
From our packet.
Right.
Right.
That's the one that was talking about the tree.
Right. Well, but it looks like there's a, is there an easement through there to Autumn Woods? Looks like there's a lot of open ground and I can't see any farther. It would be to the west and maybe a little bit south.
There is a, what we would have is a storm drain. You could get drainage from the road down in this direction.
So the water does go then to?
Yeah, the water would go between those two homes in here.
And again, thinking about maybe interconnectivity, if there was an agreement between Autumn Woods and this development for some type of a walking path that would be, that would gain access to both of them.
It's a great idea if it was and you could go in the area, but this is all kind of open space here. We've got our walking trail around here. This would be a great spot to connect, you know, some kind of walkway.
Yeah, that's what I always wondered if that's something we could explore.
Yeah, if they were agreeable, that I think would be a great idea.
Because it doesn't look like it's very close to anybody's home.
Yeah, it's not. I mean, there's a pump station down in here. It's all open space. There may be a drive down in here to get to that. I don't know if Autumn Woods has any trail or anything there, but that would be, you know, a logical spot where it's really not moved anybody in that area.
For both entities, it might be something to explore.
Can you have one more question? Originally, it seems like, Bob, you might have to answer this. It seems like we were originally trying to get the water main to go all the way across 59 over to the subdivision to the west. But that hasn't been talked about today. Now it sounds like we're just connecting a loop. How or why did that change?
That was part of the discussion we had.
And that proposal was in the prior concept that was submitted. Unfortunately, directly to the west is one of the highest elevations in the township. And it certainly would not be advantageous to run the water main any further west. And it's just a peak of a high elevation, so the plan was to, if we could redirect it to the south, we could tie in for the future. If we were ever tie in San Marino to the west, we would actually come south around that peak, if you will, because we would pose pressure issues at that elevation. It's just along 59 and unfortunately, it's right at their frontage. So normally, our ordinance does require a two and three of the utilities. In this particular instance, we were willing to make concessions based on an alternative loop. And again, that was based on the prior proposal, so that's, I believe, what you're referencing when that was discussed earlier.
Well, I think what's proposed now is the better option. Whenever you can get water moving, looped wise, it's much better.
Yes, and the original proposal did include a, I believe, a 12-inch water main coming down the court and to loop. As much as the looping aspect helps the water system, the increased diameter also helps the water system, so.
Thank you for that clarification.
Absolutely.
Any other comments from board members this evening? Do you have any final questions or applicants? I think we addressed some of the concerns from the board. I think the walkability portion of it, and if it's sensitive, the density, screening perhaps in the back. Moving the one unit potentially to open that up. Connectivity potentially to Autumn Woods. What else did we miss? End streetlights, yea or nay? I don't think there's a desire, is there a desire to have streetlights in this development?
What goes on in Mill Point is there's streetlights, but they're very low dim and they put lights on the buildings.
On the homes themselves?
Mill Point has streetlights.
I know. I just saw them. They have streetlights, but they're lower, you know, they're ornamental. I mean, if you go down there in the nighttime, it's not, they're not super bright lights. But then they also, technically each house is supposed to have the lights on in their garage. There's at least one supposed to be, supposed to come on at night automatically. And that was kind of what I think they did in terms of providing lighting in the neighborhoods. Most people have disconnected, a lot of them have disconnected.
A question for you, Bill. Does the township have a way to engage the association in a conversation about connectivity with Autumn Woods for the walking?
I don't think we have a vehicle for that, but could Dave reach out?
We could certainly look into it, yeah.
Our staff can-
It might sound more appealing to them coming from-
Right.
Someone from the township. But I would very much like to see that.
Can, Joe, when you go back to the, when they go back to the planning commission, can make sure that the road width is acceptable and not as tight as Autumn Woods? Cause I remember when we approved that site plan, that we think that they built it smaller than they were supposed to and it was after the fact. I'm almost positive that's how that happened.
I think it did too.
I think it was a-
I think the building inspector at the time from the township signed off on it.
I agree, and I think it was, I don't remember how many feet it was, but it was two feet short on each side.
Correct.
They look about the same.
Yeah. So just wanna make sure that we're not creating another potential issue.
The same problem we have, I think, also in the condos behind Kroger's, if I'm not mistaken.
Pax Ridge? I think they're pretty wide.
Are they pretty wide? Or maybe I'm thinking of the one that he had proposed-
Could be.
On that other site further north off of 1.3.
Fairways was gonna be narrow.
That's the one that, yeah, that's the one I was thinking of. Because when he was proposing that, I was, oh, those are pretty narrow. And I know that the Autumn Woods issue came up at that time, because we thought those were too narrow.
Cause there's gonna be no parking on the street.
Yeah, technically even, the bylaws in Mill Point don't permit parking on the street, but people do.
Right here, I don't think you could.
You couldn't do it in here, probably, for the home.
Okay, I think we're all set this evening.
So, I mean, do we have general consensus with the board then, like we did with the planning commission, that, you know, you feel this is a worthwhile project to move forward?
Again, it's what we try to do here, is like more of an informal, we get a consensus, but yet there's still some issues that we brought up this evening. And we want to make sure the planning commission hears the voice of the board. Hopefully, we were pretty clear with those, with some, the certain areas where the density and how far they're coming back. And we can massage some things around to make it more walkable between the communities. I think that's a big element. And the sidewalks themselves, I think there's a pretty strong sentiment that that's the direction you wanna go.
I don't know if there's room for sidewalks.
Well, they have them next door on both sides, so.
We'll look at it.
Yeah. All right, so you, at this point, get back with Dave, schedule the next planning commission meeting and start the next phase of the PD process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Drive safe tonight. I'm not sure what the weather's like out there, but hopefully better than it was. Okay, pending business, 9A is amendment resolution of the intent of use of capital improvement bonds. If you recall, not too long ago, we had John Axe's individual here and wanted to change some of the language in that. So we should use that same bond language down the road for future, what am I missing? There's a word there.
The intent is for this resolution for this year's bonds and next year's bonds.
Could be consistent.
We missed that. So we put all the projects in there so that it does meet that intent. So this is just an amendment to the prior resolution.
So with that, I'll entertain a motion for the amendment. And it is a-
I move to approve the amended resolution of intent to issue capital improvement bonds.
Support. Motion by Treasurer Horning, second by Trustee Colani. Is there any discussion? Being none, I'll have the clerk please call the roll.
Trustee Colani?
Yes.
Trustee Harper?
Yes.
Treasurer Horning?
Yes.
Supervisor Fountain?
Yes.
Trustee Petrucci?
Yes.
Trustee Harper? Are you there? I get the rope twice.
Give over one.
Trustee Chauviu, yes. I like that one, please.
Jermaine Bouches.
Thank you. Number 9B is ordinance amendment, number 76-5, A through D zoning ordinance signs. We had asked the planning commission to look at some of the signs that were currently in our community that didn't necessarily fall into any specific category. Specifically signage for home occupations, allowing portable temporary business signs in the LC and STR districts. Add provisions to donor recognition signs and add sign options allowing for identification of an agriculture or farm operation. They did their due diligence. They are recommending these changes to our ordinance. And I think they did a fine job trying to tighten up some things that really didn't have any ordinance opportunity. But at the same time, work on issues that were there that now that we can go forward with some type of a standard versus kind of gray area, let's put it that way.
I move resolution adopting ordinance number 76-5, parenthetical A through D, unparenthetical amendment to ordinance number 76. Heartland Township's ordinance amendment to the sign and definition section of the Heartland Township zoning ordinance.
Support?
Motion by Trustee Colani, second by Trustee Jermaine. And we can do this under one resolution for all four, correct? Any discussion? Being none, I'll have the clerk please call the roll.
Trustee Petrucci?
Yes.
Trustee Colani?
Yes.
Supervisor Fountain?
Yes.
Trustee Harper?
Yes.
Trustee Jermaine?
Yes.
Trustee Chauviu, yes. Treasurer Horning?
Yes.
Thank you. New business, 10A is charitable gaming license resolution. Scrolling down through my packet here to get the- I'm still on roads for signs. Has anybody else caught up?
Yep. I move to approve the resolution for charitable gaming license for Cheryl Stockwell Academy Parent Council.
Support?
Motion by Trustee Colani, second by Trustee Jermaine. Any discussion? Being none, I'll have the clerk please call the roll.
Treasurer Horning?
Yes.
Trustee Colani?
Yes.
Trustee Petrucci?
Yes.
Supervisor Fountain?
Yes.
Trustee Chauviu, yes. Trustee Jermaine?
Yes.
Trustee Harper?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, our next item is 10B, Parks Advisory Committee Board Appointments. Didn't we already do that on our consent agenda?
Those were the volunteers from the public?
Yeah.
This is to-
Oh, this is the board one, correct?
And didn't we talk about this at the-
Yes.
Work session?
And I believe that it's gonna be Matt Jermaine-
Correct.
Joe Petrucci and myself.
That's correct.
Does anybody have an issue with that? That'll be the Parks Advisory Committee. Board appointments to that committee. All right, we don't need a formal anything.
We can do that by consensus.
Consensus to the board. Nobody has a problem with that? Okay. Sewer property purchase agreement. James Wickman?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. You have the letter from Mayberry requesting a 30-day extension for their inspection period. And they've provided some reasons for that. I'm happy to elaborate or answer questions as I may know them. They're demonstrating good faith effort to move towards that. They've given indication that they believe they will, you know, continue through the process. The biggest thing was the market study was delayed by over two months from their subcontractor and they just needed that little extra time. So if, just need an indication from the board on if that's acceptable. And then a motion would probably be good along those lines. And then I could also talk a little bit about the conversation we had about the water main extension.
James, in the packet you provided, I don't believe you included the letter. Did they give us an ample amount of time to make a decision on the extension?
So that would be a document, the letter is confidential. And so if you're logged in, you should have access to that.
What was the date of the letter?
My apologies. I'll have to look into whether that's not the case. It's showing up- My apologies, I'll have to look into whether that's not the case, it's showing up for me that I can pull it up. The date was just on the 25th of last week, when we had met, and I've basically summarized it for you, is that they've, they're asking for that 30-day extension. The market analysis was commissioned in September, it was supposed to be to them in December, it was delayed by over 60 days. They provided a copy of the high-level summary, which I'm guessing you didn't get, if you didn't get the letter, but kind of demonstrated what kind of product the early indication was, and when we get the full version of it, we'll forward that to the board as well. That was them demonstrating their good faith that they're pursuing this and believe that they want to move forward, they just need that time. The alternative, of course, is if we don't grant them the extension, they can go ahead and cancel the purchase agreement, and, you know, the, any, their deposit is refundable in escrow, so, no, I don't, don't know if that, any of that causes heartburn for the board, or if we're willing to extend it, just need to let them know. And I will look into that issue with the letter, and I will also email that out separately to you so you have it.
Anybody have a problem with extending it 30 days?
I have no objection.
I entertain a motion to extend the due diligence. So, Mayberry?
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Petrucci, second by Treasurer Horning. Any other discussion? Being none, all's in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed nay. Motion carries.
And if I may, just look for a little bit of discussion and feedback from the board. Yep, the purpose of our, main purpose of our meeting last week is to discuss the extension of the water main. And they have, they are, they would like to connect to the municipal water, their concern has to do with the cash flow and phasing of the project, and obviously, the bottom line, how their performer, performs. For them, they, the community well is much more attractive in that regard, because they can, for round numbers, if it's a million and a half dollars to extend the water main down to them, instead, they could do a community well system on the north side of the road when they do phase one for half a million dollars, and, you know, let that product sell, and, you know, a couple of years later, come back and do another community well on the south side of the road for half a million dollars, and that works for them cash flow-wise. Putting a one and a half million dollars up front is what, what is the concern to them. And so they would like some consideration to, to help them with that. We've indicated, from a staff perspective, from a professional perspective, them connecting to the water system is not a must-have. We have neighborhoods with community wells, adding that to the system isn't necessarily any major boon for the system or a major benefit overall. There's a few properties along that main that could connect at a later time, and they'd be a reimbursement, since they outlaid the expense proportionally, but, so, we're fairly agnostic about them connecting. But they, they see the benefit, as a general rule, it's, I think it's better overall for them to be connected, and so we might want to consider something. And I just need to know, I mean, one potential approach could be that they, if we get a short SAD, where there was a significant down payment of, you know, if it's a million and a half, and they put a half million down, and we don't build the systems till they start moving dirt, and the SAD is only three, four, five years, does that give us a better, you know, it's not quite the same as building a pipe to nowhere for a 20-year assessment, is that, is that type of thing amenable to the board, is kind of what I'm looking for, to be able to talk with them about that. If not, that's fine, we can just tell them that it's not going to work. They certainly understand, you know, why we're not, or the poster children for not building pipes with 20 years assessments to vacant land, but I'm happy to hear the board's thoughts on this.
When we talked about this in our admin meeting, there was not really a huge opportunity for others to hook up.
It's limited.
Till you get to the other side of the road, but you said that they would have to bring in their own.
Right, if, if Heartland Glen wanted to connect the water, they'd have to bring in their own. We couldn't feed the special planning area and Heartland Glen off that same 12-inch, so they'd have to bring down their own. Otherwise, there's a few properties along the way, um-
Bring down their, would that mean that they could actually tie into the 12-inch upstream a little bit and bring it across themselves, or they would have to have their own?
Who, who is that?
Like the Heartland Glen property?
Yeah, there's, it's on the south side of the road, back to the west.
So they could, could bring it down that, from that direction?
Yeah.
And that would, so there's the capacity?
You bring it, again, you parallel, and you want to loop them eventually, so.
The thing that I, I'm concerned with is kind of like what we found with, like, Woodcliff and so forth, you know, they built their wells, and then you-
Took them over.
And then we, eventually, we took them over, but when we brought water, and that was a pretty big, that was a difficult-
We, we put them on full notice that while we are agnostic on whether they have community well, the standard to which they have to build that community well, because we have to live with either possibly taking it over later, or just the general complaints from residents later, we don't want that. The standard has to be good, and we did, we would probably be opposed to that community well being-
I would be more in favor of-
Five years.
Of, of, of bringing this water down and providing water there, I think that's a better investment in the long term, I mean, long term.
And that would be big enough for both sides of the road?
Is there, is there capacity enough for that?
It's only for them.
It'd only be for the north side of the road, both sides?
It, it only, well, I mean, I suppose you could do a bore, but really, there's not much opportunity to the south side of the road for connections. The Bailey's piece, Gower's piece, maybe Trillium connects, maybe the piece next to the Drive and Range connects, you got a lot of smaller-
I'm talking about-
South side.
The south side of 59.
Oh, yes, for their land.
For that land?
Yes.
This connection would come-
Would go both, yeah, right.
That was my question.
Yes.
There's enough capacity for that.
Their, their buying of our U's would fund the third treatment vessel, which is where the capacity issue is right now. We don't have enough treatment capacity, but if they connected, they'd be given enough money to add the capacity.
The, the original 2010 Water Master Plan indicated an extensively looped system, actually running north of Dunham Road, dropping down Tipton, or Fenton, I'm sorry, Fenton Lake Road, or Fenton Road, and then coming back with 16-inch water main along 59, which would be sufficient to, to serve both the north and south side. We've discussed how the feasibility of that actually happening. As an alternative, what we're proposing is extend the existing 12-inch main on the north side of 59, that will be sufficient to serve the north side. There's also, by the ice arena, where both water mains dead end right now, there is a 12-inch on the south side. So for Heartland Glen or any of the developments on the south side, I would recommend extending that 12-inch. They're going to serve the same function as if we did a single 16-inch main, in fact, they'll actually exceed the capacity of a single 16-inch main. But that's how we're kind of in this situation, is, the master plan actually called for a 16-inch main, but it was being backfed, actually, from the north and from the south, so it's kind of a unique circumstance, when you say, why isn't the 16-inch main, or whose idea was it to put a 12 in? That's kind of how we came about, it's, it's just, you know, a little bit backwards of a development.
And it allows you, I'm sorry, it still allows a loop, right? I mean, you're doing, by doing this 12-inch and bringing it down, then later-
In theory, yes, we would have parallel water mains, which is an excellent idea along 59. If we ever had a water main break, we isolate that, we can go around it, and we're not putting these businesses out. So I think that's a, a great idea.
Is that, will that 12 on the south side of 59 also accommodate Heartland Glen then, if they ever develop?
Yes, most likely, we would loop the two, so would, not only, you know, if one was being maxed out, it's actually going to pull from the other one. What we'd do is, when the south 12-inch main came along, we would, every, say, 500, 600 feet, you'd just pop a, a connection in from the north to the south, to make the system redundant and more reliable. So yes, absolutely, you would actually feed M59 off of two 12-inch mains, instead of a single-
That would only happen if, if Heartland Glen also wanted to connect. So, for now, what's being proposed is one 12-inch extension on the north side only, two both, and that would serve both sewer properties on both sides of 59.
Okay.
But that wouldn't be enough, that should Heartland Glen want water later, then they would extend-
Then you'd go through two of these properties, and that'll be the other.
Right, and then, then we'd close the loop there.
Yeah, yeah, so-
And right now, the weakest link is our filter capacity, which has been a known issue, and, you know, certainly, like James had mentioned, our U fees would offset the cost for that.
And that plant has, has the ability to expand, doesn't it?
Yes, it does. In its current building, the wall envelope, it can take four filter vessels, we currently have two. The master design was to expand the building out for even an additional two, if it came down to that point, for a maximum of six. We actually have the engineered drawings for up to six filters, but we'd actually have to extend the walls out to add the last two.
The tower can handle six.
Yes, the tower is more of a, it reduces the peak volume, these filter vessels simply, that's our limiting factor, we could, the wells will pump more than what can go through the filter. So that's our weakest link right now. We just had all the wells updated within the past three, four years, so they're actually producing over what their, I guess, what their, the rating is on paper, if you will, which leads us to this filter, that, that's our weakest link, so.
Matty, you got a question?
I wanted to ask, James, that your opening remarks is that the developer's looking for the township to try to help support the cost of this installation, or something to that effect?
Certainly, they were asking if we would. I, I had no reason to tell them that we would. I mean, that they, the position has always been, since I've been here, you need to extend the infrastructure, it's at your cost. We have policies in place that allow for reimbursement if somebody along the way connects later, and we would honor that, but we've indicated that that's all at their cost.
Okay.
Now, this is just a question of whether we'd be willing to finance, I mean, we'd have to sell a bond, we'd have to, you know, charge an interest on an SAD for a few years. Is the board comfortable with that concept, if I continue talks with them about?
If we're gaining 400 customers, I'd say so.
Anybody against that? Thank you. Everybody's comfortable. Very good. As long as there's something that, there's something that triggers us not ending up like we were before.
That's the idea, is that, we wouldn't, it wouldn't take long to construct that, so we could actually wait till they're putting assets in the ground before we pull the trigger.
All right, thank you for those updates. We go to number 11, it's board reports, and we are in our first meeting in March. We start with Trustee Harper.
No report.
Trustee Petrucci?
No report.
Clerk Shofu?
No report.
Treasurer Horning?
I'd just like to bring up one little thing I mentioned to Bill before the meeting tonight, and he said, just put a budget amendment through, but I thought I'd just mention it to all of you guys while you're together, is, I've run into this problem now for three years, where at the end of the year, I run out of time for Cory to work, she works two five-hour days. Her last day was today until March 30th, because I have no more budget, and it's happened three years in a row, so I wondered if anybody would have a problem if I asked for a budget amendment for the rest, it would be on the next agenda for 10 more hours, so she could work a couple of days for me, while Donna's on vacation, otherwise, I won't get any work done in my office. And then, for next year, I should have thought about it, I'd put it in the same memo if it's okay, 30 hours for the entire year, it's about 360 bucks, so.
No problem. Does that affect any kind of benefits that we-
She's part-time, no benefits.
She's part-time, it won't affect that?
No.
Okay.
No. She's on 10 hours a week, so, okay, that's all for me, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd say if you need her to work next week before the amendment, I don't have a problem with that.
I don't either. Works for me.
You'd let us know in advance, so I'm happy.
Okay, so the amendment would be for 15 hours, and, okay.
For the rest of this month?
Yeah.
Once you make a motion to that effect.
Just do the motion.
Just do the motion, then it's in the minutes, and you can figure it out with the paperwork later. Is that okay to do that way, James? So just entertain a motion to add 15 hours.
Well, if you, I really don't want to make, under my motion for my own department, just say $150 plus benef, plus, what do you say, social security and?
Motion to add additional hours to-
Cashier.
The cashier in the treasurer's department to, and appropriate budget amendment for up to 15 hours.
Thank you.
Support. Okay, a motion by Trustee Colani, second by Trustee Jermaine. Any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay, motion carries. Thank you.
Yep.
Trustee Colani?
I just want to congratulate the Heartland wrestling team. Last weekend, they made it to the team state finals, to the, the actual final, and it was an all-county final against Brighton, all teams, and it was unbelievable, the number of people from Livingston County that were at the, that tournament, or that match, and although they came up short, the boys, I think, did a fabulous job, they, they were great, and it, it really shows how great our, our programs here for both the men and women who attend Heartland Consolidated Schools, because if you look, if you follow everything in the paper, over the last few years, it seems like Heartland is right there in, in the women's sports, and the, and the men's sports, and it's just really great to see the accomplishments, and, and the wrestling team in particular, this is, just a really a side note, it's the 14th year in a row that Heartland has made it to the team state finals, and has appeared, and has, all right, let's see, in the last four years, I know they were in the final four, and yesterday, Saturday, they were among the top two, so, great program, Coach Chaney has done a fabulous job, and I just want to extend the congratulations to the team and the coaches.
Thank you. Trustee Jermaine?
No report.
Just briefly, we had a organization meeting this morning for board review. As mentioned before, we have it down to two days this year, right now, we have 27 applicants on the books for Monday and Wednesday, but we did take one whole day out of it. It was a good meeting, and if you want to go to board review, if you're listening at home, call our assessor, Jim Heslop, and he'll get you on, on our agenda. Manager Wickman?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. There's a lot of information on operational reports, I won't try to hit all the highlights. A couple of things, I did want to get some feedback from the board on. One was, I had notified you about that professional development opportunity with the Kennedy School of Government. I do have a scholarship, I'd like to pursue for that if the board is so inclined to allow me. That deadline is this week, so I'd like to have some indication if the board believes that that's something worth pursuing, with the costs involved or not, I'd like to, happy to hear that feedback. I can, I know I did get some questions, and I, I can speak generally about what I, the information I had provided you. My intent is not to try to, to sell you on it frankly, if either it's something that the board sees of value, or if not, that's fine too. I do think that it's an excellent opportunity for just general development for me, as a leader and as a manager, there are, a lot of it is focused on how to better help the board approach and implement some of the policy issues and decisions that I think are, are in our future, and understanding, you know, the, the behavioral dimensions of, of decision-making, and, and helping reach consensus, and a lot of best practices and innovation partnerships and collaborative governance, including a big piece on the citizen engagement, which we're, we, you know, we've really been getting a good start in the last couple of years, so with that, I'm happy to hear the board's questions or feedback on that opportunity.
James, is this offered every year?
It is.
And it's at the same time as June or July?
June, July, yeah.
July. Anybody have any comments?
Well, we discussed this last week, and I think that the consensus of the managers' committee is that we would, we would not oppose you attending, but I don't know that we'd be willing to send you without having you use vacation time for the absence. And then the other thing is that we felt that we wanted to get the entire board's input on- input on whether there'd be any financial contributions toward it, but we didn't, we certainly didn't think we'd be willing to pay half.
Currently in your, in your budget that you have, was it $3,000 for additional education?
Annual budget, yeah, it's 3,000 and change, I want to say. This is basically two years' worth of that.
And would you be willing to forego that for this year, if this is that important to you? I mean, take those, that $3,000 that's allocated right now for continuing education and use it for this one event?
Oh, sure, sure.
What I was speaking of was above and beyond that.
I see.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, but I shared this with James in our meeting yesterday. In other situations where, situations like this would come up, there would be some type of agreement if, for some reason, he didn't stay in our employment for a period of time, that there would be a schedule of repayment back to the township, whatever our expenses were, whether it was his wages or actual pay for the school or whatever, that there would be a, for every year, it would be reduced how much he'd have to reimburse us.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I forget the right term for that. But anyways, if he leaves, you know, right the day after he comes back, he has to reimburse us 100% for the expenses. You know, if he stays a year, then maybe 80%. If he stays two years, 60%, 40%, then nothing. You know, so some type of agreement like that, and that's not uncommon, even I discussed this yesterday, that's not an uncommon request.
Right. I would, I would be in favor of, an educational opportunity like this is tremendous for the entire township if James does stay with us during that time. I personally would see us paying for him to go, and I love the idea of maybe 20% a year, you know, or whatever you're going to say for three or four, 33% over three years or whatever, but, you know, I can see the township paying for it because to me, it's an intensive program. If you've read the synopsis of what it does, it's only going to lift our township to another level yet.
Was there a recommendation from the managers' committee other than what you spoke about? There's no...
We're not opposed to going, put it that way.
But it's the cost and the amount of time. Anybody else have any thoughts? I mean, it's, it's two years of education. That's, if you're getting 3,000 years, two years in one program, and what are you going to miss out with all the other things that you were involved with if you were to perhaps take the two years' worth?
Well, if he did that, I wouldn't expect him to reimburse us because that's his normal budget.
But it's some, I think what Matt was suggesting, it's somewhere between the 3,000 that's there, if they're willing to do any more than that at all. Would you be willing to forgive for both two years' worth of education, next year's as well?
Yeah, I can propose that.
But aren't you going to try to get some funding from another source to cover half of it?
Yeah. Well, what's remaining is the half of it.
That's the other...
You'd be using his two years' worth of continued education for this one belt, one item?
I only cause her pause on the, because if the Michigan Local Government Management Association Scholarship were to be, I think they would have an expectation that I would present at a conference that followed. I wouldn't necessarily have to go there and, you know, for all the four days and do all that. That might be the only thing, but...
Can they pay for a half a year or a quarter of a year if that's...
I'm sure we can figure that out, is I guess my opinion.
You're going to use two years' worth, and if there's some type of a schedule, if it's on the table, is it gets reimbursed?
I would think so. If he's using his regular budgeted amount...
Using two years' worth?
Right. I would say only the portion, not years. He wears, but, you know, that's what he spends each year in his budget. So to me, we would make him pay back this year as if he's still here.
I understand, okay.
Yeah. It's his normal budget, so. And if he stays two years, then he wouldn't owe us anything because that's his budget. I mean, if we're going to pay for it, it's still allowing to do a couple other things, but then I can see the repayment on it.
Of the 3,000 that's budgeted though, it's for continuing education to maintain designations that you've earned. If that goes away, will this one thing cover that? Obviously, maybe for the first year, but... I have to get 40 hours a year, but the ICMA is quite flexible on that. I mean, I do attend various things, even through the chamber, things that can add towards that, but I also have the flexibility that if I wanted to do a book study or some other thing, I can do that, so I'm not...
So can you, before, so we can talk about where you spend that $3,000 more, or $3,000 now, and what's, what is going to be taken away from your, from that budget line item? By not, by going to this event versus other things?
I haven't, well, the truth is, I haven't spent all that every year. I mean, usually, a week conference with winter one and a summer one statewide, and those are less than $1,000 each, all expenses in. I mean, I did go to the national one in Milwaukee a few years ago that actually wasn't that much more because it was around the corner. So I don't, I haven't really used all that every year. It's those two, and then if I, you know, whether it's buying a book or some other education or some seminar, the MML or MTA's putting on, those are the types of things I've used it for.
So when you go to chamber events, is that coming out of, is that...
Actually, I think it is. No, that's coming out of membership and dues.
What's the, how would the board like to proceed? Entertain a motion?
We need a motion.
What's that?
We need a motion.
Well, if you're, you're going to be affecting two years' budget.
Yeah, we can, I don't know that you need a motion. Consensus could be fine, I just don't know if I'm 100% clear what consensus is.
Consensus is you use this year's and next year's expense budget for, was it training and education?
Hmm.
And then if you were to leave...
Before the end of two weeks.
Well, it'd be that, if you could just do it by the fiscal year, whatever 12, whatever months are remaining after that point, so.
Now, which budget we talking about? We talking about the budget fiscal year 14?
This year and next year.
No. Because, oh, you don't have...
15, 16, 17.
No, it's for the next, the one we just approved and the year after.
Right.
So for April 1st, 2014 to 17.
That portion that relates to James?
Correct.
Is there something in there possibly for Sharon, is Sharon in his budget?
It's a good question. I mean, we've center it out of that budget. The dollar amount I use is one that's in my contract that says X number will be dedicated for my training. I've never really asked for more than that for Sharon. I've used the part, I have my unused amounts for her that, that could be a potential. I mean, if, if I'm sure about, certain about what I'm hearing, if there's consensus on this, I mean, if we were to leave a little room in that budget for, whether it be Sharon or even me to go to other things, that additional money be accounted for in some sort of a payback agreement? Is that, does that address the question or concern or not?
Well, the concern is you're spending two years' worth of education, education and training on a three-week course.
Yes.
For giving, for going everything else.
Right.
That's what's on the table.
Sure.
So that's a, I mean, that's a big commitment, not only on behalf of yourself, but the board.
And for, for what it's worth, that, you know, that $3,000 a year basically covers, you know, 12 days of conferences, whereas this is a 17, 19-day program.
Does that work, James?
Yeah, yeah.
It's on the weekend too, or...
Some of it does go on the weekend, and some of, most of them are long days, you have a lot of homework and stuff, so.
So, is it clear? Or not yet?
I think, I think I've got most of it. I'm not 100% clear yet on the vacation piece. I, I don't think, frankly, I don't think it's an issue. I lose vacation days every year because I don't take them all. If you want me to take, use that, that's fine too, because I wasn't going to use them anyway. But, so...
I don't recall taking too many sick days since you've been here either.
All right, so, we will take this year's expense budget for training and education and next year's. James is willing to take vacation pay for that three-week, three-week, three-week period?
Sure.
And then some type of amortization schedule if he were to leave up to that second year of his employment? You're just break it out by month?
I could...
Like by 18 months? So if it just goes down, it's going to be about a year and a half from this budget?
Good.
So if it was 18 months out of the, if you take 3,000 divided by 18, and that's what you're... So every month that ticks off, it would be a lot that much...
It's 6,000. I can figure out the breakdown and...
Does that sound fair? Is that...
$30 a month? So with that consensus in mind, I mean, all of this may be moved if I don't get scholarship, and so we can, we can pick up those pieces if...
Okay. All right.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, just two more, a couple of highlights I also forgot. I did forget to mention my operational report, a reminder that next Monday, the 9th, we are going to network with the school board at, before their meeting at 6 o'clock. So they meet at 6:30, meeting early at 6, on the 9th, at 6 o'clock for coffee and cookies and discussion. No agenda, just to keep...
More like a meet and greet this time?
Meet and greet, and we'll probably host one with them later in the year and just keep that communication open and lead to other conversations.
That's the, the educational support center?
Yes, right.
6 o'clock?
Jan said she might want to bring up the road issue, the state.
Yeah, probably.
The, at 6 o'clock?
At 6 o'clock.
It starts at 6:30?
Their meeting starts at 6:30.
So it's just going to be a half hour?
Just a half hour.
Okay, 6, I got it, so.
Yeah. So Monday, the 9th at 6.
Okay. Could you have Sharon sent out a friendly memo?
Yep.
Thank you.
And then I am looking at our next board meeting on the 17th, and I don't know what's going to happen with our agenda tonight, but we're going to have a few more things. I'm anticipating probably a special meeting, maybe starting at 6, to talk about some of the strategic plan stuff that's on the table, just to make sure we're all on the same page for the bar and kind of debrief our budget process as well. But the, the last thing I did want to mention is, you know, we've been working with the partners of the Heartland Family by Nature and the whole volunteer initiative on a volunteer of the year award. We've received nominations for six individuals. I'm sure you'll, you'll know them all. There is more information to come on that, and we'll forward that to the board. The idea is that, you know, there'd be public voting on that through social media or online, and that whoever is selected as the volunteer of the year for Heartland, you know, one would get some recognition here from, from the board on a proclamation of some sort, and looking at, trying to incorporate them as well into the parade of, again, trying to elevate and promote volunteerism, so.
That's good.
That was one of my highlights. Happy to answer any other questions the board may have.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to information and discussion, and I have a request for a two-minute break, so.
How long are we, I just have a quick question. How long are we going to go? We've been here three hours.
Well, I think that's something we can talk about.
All right.
Do you want to try to finish up the...
Let's finish the water.
Finish the water issue.
See.
How long is Susan's presentation?
Yeah.
I would suggest that we move Susan's presentation up and let her go through the boil model so she can leave. Is that the only thing that she needs to be here for?
It's either that or...
Susan, Laura?
If you don't, blast your buddy right here, it's okay. I, I don't, is it, how far do we want to go? Is the question.
Sounds like, sounds like we're getting...
Susan is ready to go home now.
I'm really sorry. I thought, this is what I would refer.
I had been home to change, and that was it.
Okay. I think since Susan's here, her presentation isn't long. If she gets back and Joe gets back, let's at least let her, she's been kind enough to stay here, and then let's reschedule everything else. Is that a...
I think we can get through both. Are you? We're almost done with the water, right?
I, I think we're almost ready to vote on the water.
Yeah, you would. How much time are we going to beat it up?
Yeah, I mean, we're just...
Are we off the air? We are off the air.
Yes, the light's off.
Okay. And it's off the, unless the, the sound's still on?
Uh, yeah, sound, I think so.
Are you watching, right?
Do we want to be on here?
Yeah.